Good evening and welcome to the Village of Westmont Committee of the Hall Meeting for September 29th, 2011. I'd like to begin the meeting by asking our clerk to please take the roll call.
Mayor Ron?
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Emory?
Here.
Trustee Fleming?
Here.
Trustee Klebina is in his absent. Trustee Nero?
Here.
Trustee Scott?
Here.
Trustee Seneca?
Here.
Manager Searle?
Here.
Attorney Zemanek?
Here.
Public Works Director May?
Here.
Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimball?
Here.
Acting Finance Director Parker?
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern?
Here.
Fire Chief Trout?
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Gunther?
Here.
Human Resource Administrator Casey?
Here.
She is here, I think. Assistant Economic Development Director and Village Planner Malick?
Here.
Okay. Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item of the minutes of the September 19th Combined Committee, the Hall Meeting and Village Board Meeting. Any corrections to be reported?
We did do some typo cleanup where we had set up the computer already with everything on it, so it had skipped in the voting record over to and left our items of discussion like they were going to be voted on, but they weren't, so we corrected all of that. That's it.
Thank you. Open forum.
Yes, there is an open forum. Where did I just put it? You don't have to. He's right there. It's Mr. Kirkland.
Mr. Kirkland, if you'd care to come forward, please.
Here it is. I'm sorry.
There it is. We found it.
Mr. Mayor and members of the Board, good evening. My name is John Kirkwood. I live at 3525 Cass Court in Royal Hills located in the Village of Westmont. I realize the S-Curve Park issue has been removed from the agenda for this evening, but I wanted to take the opportunity to commend the Park District for responding to our concerns. As you know, there were a large number of us here back in August expressing our concern, and we do commend them for taking this action and we thank them for removing this issue from the agenda. However, this is a temporary solution. It really doesn't permanently resolve this issue of the status of that property. The Park District has said, and I've met with them a couple of times, that they will leave things the way they are for now, but as you can imagine, circumstances are likely to change in the future. Public officials will change in the future, and there is a strong possibility that we might be faced with this issue again at some time in the future, and that would be with regard to the Park District wanting to annex, rezone, and sell the land for development purposes. I ask that the Board consider taking steps now toward a permanent solution to this problem so that this can be avoided in the future. It's my understanding that the Village of Oakbrook proposed an intergovernmental agreement last winter with the Village of Westmont that would address the annexation issue and ensure that the property remain a passive park. I understand that this offer still stands. I would like to ask the Board if you would be willing to consider this offer, and if so, ask Council, Mr. Zemanek, to meet with attorneys for the Village of Oakbrook and the Park District to discuss specifics of an intergovernmental agreement and report a recommendation back to the Board. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is that something that you might consider, or is that something that you would take under advisement, Mr. Mayor, and make a decision on later on?
I was at a meeting yesterday with the mayor of the Village President of Oakbrook, and he did mention to me that the final solution would be an intergovernmental agreement between the two villages. However, we feel at this time that it's not our prerogative to bring that up. It was all brought about by the Park District, and until they're ready to move forward on it and to, for a choice of better words, it's still a rather sore subject in Oakbrook and here in the Village of Westmont.
Yes.
So hopefully, within the not-too-distant future, there will come a time when we can sit down with both sides represented and indeed come up with an intergovernmental agreement, because I myself am in favor of keeping it open space.
Would it be advisable for us to speak with the Park District Board at one of their meetings to get some sense of their reaction?
Absolutely. You have every right in the world to appear at their meetings, and I don't know if the manager has his calendar in front of him.
My recollection is October 13th or thereabouts. Well, that would be fine. Perhaps we can speak with them and get some reaction from them. I do have another issue, and I don't want to take too much time on this because it is in the open forum, but as I looked at the timeline for the conveyances of the property, both to the village and from the village to the Park District, and the recording of deeds, and correspondence between the attorney for the Park District and the attorney for the village, there appears to be some confusion. It may be on my part, but at least I would like to put it before the Board, and perhaps there is an issue here, perhaps there is not. The original deed conveying the property from the Butler family to the village was dated April 7th, 1987. Five months later, on September 2nd, that deed was the deed recorded a year later, August 26th, 1988. On September 2nd, 1987, the Park District conveyed, or the village conveyed the property to the Park District, and that deed was recorded October 2nd, 1987, as we have previously discussed, prior to the recording of the deed of the original conveyance from Butler family. However, there is correspondence in the file from the attorney, is it Mr. Kabesia, if I'm pronouncing his name correctly, to Mr. Zemus, who was a member of your firm at that time, that raised some questions that I thought were confusing, because this letter, and I have a copy, which I can leave with each of the trustees, is dated November 11th, 1988, over a year after the deed was recorded by the Park District. And in that letter, Mr. Kabesia enclosed a copy of the Park District ordinance requesting a conveyance of the property to the Park District. Mind you, it's a year after this had occurred, and also asked Mr. Zemus to prepare a resolution for the Village Board of Trustees authorizing the conveyance of this property from the village to the Park District. He also asked Mr. Zemus to prepare the deeds from the village to the Park District and that he will record them. And this is where the confusion comes in. If this was conveyed a year earlier and recorded a year earlier, why is Mr. Kabesia acting on behalf of the Park District asking Council for, I believe Mr. Zemus was counsel for the Village Board here, to prepare a resolution for you to act on conveying the property and then recording the deeds? And in my mind, and Mr. Zemanek, I know, reading his bio, is very skilled and knowledgeable in this area, may be able to answer the question, because the question is whether or not the trustees approved the conveyance of the land from the village to the Park District, and did they do that subsequently to the filing of the recording by the Park District? And if the village trustees are required to approve this, did they do it prior to the recording of that deed? And if they did not, if it was done subsequently as a catch-up because somebody found maybe there was a mistake here or whatever, then did the Park District have a valid conveyance from the village on this property? Or do they have to go back and it has to be revisited, and they have to refile and record the deed properly if it was required to be approved by this body? I don't know the answer to that, and I would defer to Mr. Zemanek and his. The answer is it's a valid conveyance, that even if, I don't know if prior board approval was obtained or not, but if they ratified the act after the fact? After the fact? It's valid. Certainly, so much time has elapsed with the village knowing that the Park District has ownership of, the village would have waived any right, same with any public right to object to that conveyance. So your opinion is there was a valid conveyance with or without approval in advance by the trustees here? Absolutely. Yes. Thank you. That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in, Mr. Kirkland. That's the only open forum request that we have before us this evening. Moving right along, Mayor, I have nothing to report at this time. Village Clerk?
I just want to oppose a problem that the Waste Management Recycling, that posed to me the other day, you'll understand this, Trustee Fleming. He was concerned in the winter if maybe we would put our recycling bins out because of them having difficulty getting through the alleys, those of us that put it in the alley. So it's something we need to talk to Waste Management about, or I understand their concern when they couldn't get through with the snows. Last year, it was hard for them to get their equipment through. But anyway, that's something we need to think about, and just posing that as a possible problem coming up. You know, it's getting cold out there, in case you didn't notice, the temperature was dropping. Then secondly, Police Chief Mulhern, would you like to come up and talk about some of your business you have going on?
Thank you. As I announced last Board Meeting and as a reminder tonight, we're holding a series of community events, Coffee with the Chief. We had our first event Tuesday night at the Westmont Park District, and we have two more scheduled, one tomorrow night at Maze Lake, 1801 West 35th Street, from 6:30 to 8:30, and one Saturday morning at 8:30 a.m. till 10:30 at the Westmont Yard down on 63rd Street, and everyone's welcome to come to attend. Me with myself and my staff, interested to hear what's going on in the community and any concerns they may have, and give and take that we can also explain things with VC in the community as well. And along those lines, on the overhead here, we have two surveys out. Last week, I mentioned a business survey, and this week, we will be announcing on the website tomorrow, we have a community survey that residents can take, and it's a very short survey. It's very brief, and if I can zoom it up here a little bit. At the bottom of this card, and we're handing these out at our events, and also will be on the website tomorrow, if you go to http://goo.gl/g8aQn, and they are case-sensitive, it takes you right to the survey, and the survey should take you under two or three minutes depending on what information. We're seeking information. What do you see around your community? What are your concerns? How can the police department serve you better? And we also would like to be able to exchange the information to Coffee with the Chief, so it's the first time, as far as my recent memory, that we've done this, and it's something I've been wanting to do for a while, and the time is right now for us to get out and learn what our residents' concerns are and what questions they would have and how the police department can serve them better. So both of these, again, they'll be on the Village website and also be on the police department's website. Both of these invitations will be posted so our residents can go to these sites and participate in our survey. Currently, the business survey has been up for one week, and we have, as of 5 o'clock today, 33 responses. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tom. Next, our Village Attorney, John Zemanek.
Nothing to report tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Village Manager Ron Searle?
Thank you. I just wanted to request executive session to discuss personnel and potential land acquisition. That's it.
Moving right along, trustee items. Start with trustee Seneca.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. Wanted to congratulate the Chamber and Casey's on a great Oktoberfest event last Friday night. It was absolutely fabulous. It was well-attended. The food was great, provided by Uncle Bubbs. Great music. The weather held out. It was a wonderful event. Also, they followed up that next Wednesday with an open house at Westmont Center for our Chamber, and that was extremely well-attended. It was very nice to see all of the businesses participate. And then the last thing I had was the homecoming parade tonight on Cass Avenue was wonderful. The wind was brutal, and the poor kids were suffering. It started a few minutes early, and there was some discussion on the street as to why did they start it early? People are trying to get here, and they're going to miss it, and yada, 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 and people were, you know, upset because it's a short parade, so some did miss it. So I just wanted to call the chief to the podium so he could explain what happened and why.
The parade was scheduled to start at 6:30 this evening. Burlington and Cass moved northward starting at 6 o'clock. We started receiving weather alerts of a potential severe storm or storm that would be in the Bensonville-O'Hare Airport area at 6:30, and that storm was carrying winds of 50 to 60 miles an hour. As we were standing there watching the weather to the horizon, we saw ominous clouds coming in. I met with the superintendent of the schools and the principal of Carr. We discussed that we still wanted the parade to go on, and so it was decided that to try to get it in before the winds hit or any storms hit, that we would start the parade six minutes early rather than canceling and having no parade. We thought that we would go six minutes early. Also, we took the additional precautions of bringing the buses, which were staged at Melrose and Cass at the end of the parade. We brought them down to actually be in the parade at the end so that if something, if the storm or weather did hit, the students could have find shelter in the buses. There was also a plan was in place that we immediately would have opened Manning School, and everyone would have been directed to Manning School if that would have been needed as a shelter in place position. Luckily, we didn't need that, and the error of caution in light of what we've seen, the biggest thing was in my mind, watching the film from Indianapolis State Fair in Indiana. I spotted an abundance of caution, figured rather than having no parade or having someone injured that we would start six minutes early. As the buses were reaching Naperville and Cass, the winds kicked in.
Come here. Well, thank you for explaining.
I'm sorry some people were disappointed and upset about error in the side of caution. I'd rather have been started early rather than having someone injured.
Right. Thank you. Thank you for explaining, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Emery?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Trustee Nero?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Trustee Fleming?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
And trustee Scott?
Thank you. One thing is I'd like to bring to the attention, excuse me, to the Board, the National League of Cities program, which is a discount prescription program that they have available free to the community. There's 495 communities in the country right now that are participating in it. They have had a savings of $7.2 million in prescription costs to those people that are involved with it. I think it's like a 23% or 25% reduction on the cost of the prescriptions for people who have no insurance or ones who have insurance, but that medication that they're on isn't covered by their insurance. So we can get all the information from the to the village. They'll do the cards, they'll do everything, and we can hand it out to the residents. They can take them to their local pharmacies. There's a bunch of them that are on the program with it, and they can get the discount on it. So I think it's something we should look at doing.
Good idea.
So I've already sent for the information, so as soon as we get it, I'll give it to the village manager.
And that was through who again?
National League of Cities.
Which we belong to.
Right. And that since we do belong to it, that's part of the benefit of it.
Yeah, we should take advantage of that.
If I could have an update on the multi-taxing governmental bodies that organization or that group we have put together with volunteers from the school board, the park board, the village board. Have we had a meeting lately, or is there one scheduled?
Which meeting are you referring to?
The one where we formed that committee with board members from all the different boards from the taxing bodies?
We have not.
Okay.
We have not had a meeting lately. We're looking at a time to reschedule. In the past, we've gotten good response from marker school, and of course, north of 55th Street, the Park District, the library, District 201, we will once again send the notices out to all the schools that feed into Westmont. We haven't had a whole lot of success in bringing those people forward, but we are working on that.
Okay.
Another meeting to contact all those individuals.
Good. Thank you. And then if we could have Shannon come up and give us an update on the Com Plan meeting coming up?
Thank you, trustee Scott. Good evening, village board members. I think most are well-aware. We've been getting the word out about our comprehensive plan process, but we wanted to take an opportunity to invite all of our residents that are interested to come to Village Hall next Tuesday evening at 7:00 p.m. for our first community workshop. So our consultant, Halsey Levine, will be present, and we're eliciting as much feedback as we can from our community and our residents as we move forward over the next 10 or 12 months. So we would love for our residents to come out and be a part of things. We've had a number of other successful meetings, our working committee, some members of the business community, and then our own elected and appointed officials' meetings, but this is the next step, and we really want as many people as are able to come out next Tuesday evening, which is the 4th, here again at 7:00 p.m. If for any reason people cannot show up, there are plenty of other opportunities to be involved. We have the website, which you can link to through the Village's website, www.westmont-il.gov, and then on the right-hand side, there's a link to the comprehensive plan information and our webpage that the consultant has put together for us, which still has the mapping tool available. On our homepage, as I believe has been mentioned before, we're still looking for people's feedback to use the mapping tool that's present, and there are directions in the mayor's report on our homepage. And then, of course, there will be a number of other public meetings. There are public hearings that are required in order to go from each step along the way, so look for that over the next, again, 10 to 12 months. Anything, any questions, or? Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
And that's it for me, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along. Unfinished business. Smart grid legislation. Board to consider resolution, opposing the current Senate Bill 1652. Com Ed smart grid legislation.
We distributed a draft of this resolution at the last meeting, and the Board asked if we could schedule it for this agenda for consideration. We had an opportunity to read through it. There's a little more background information on the cover sheet. Tried to explain that the resolution has been drafted in a way to be consistent with some principles that were put forth by the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference several years ago in a resolution that they adopted concerning smart grid technology. You know, as the Board knows, we had representatives here from Commonwealth Edison several meetings ago. They talked about the legislation. The legislation itself has been vetoed by the governor, and now it's at a state where it could be voted on, and the governor's veto could be overridden by the General Assembly. We're not suggesting in the resolution that we support the current state of the legislation, but we're trying to suggest that we support the idea of improving, modernizing our electric grid, having more reliable power, and having cost-effective power. And that's what we tried to capture in it. Certainly, we're open to any suggestions from any board members if you'd like to change it or delete sections of it, but this is something similar to, I know Don has grown past a resolution a couple of meetings ago, and some other communities have looked at similar types of actions.
Any questions or comments? Moving right along. Next item, graffiti spray paint sale ordinance. Board to consider an ordinance, mending the code of ordinances regarding graffiti, graffiti removal, and restricting the retail display and sale of spray paint. When the discussion is completed on this, I know we have Mr. Bales Jr. from Bales Hardware here, and at that time, I would like to recognize him to come up and make any comments, and if there's anyone else in the audience, I would like to hear from them as well. Go ahead.
Well, I guess I'll start. There were a few tweaks based on comments made at the last meeting, and you have the ordinance passed out in front of you. Turning to the third page of that ordinance, Section 58-133, I know there were some comments about the time periods from when the village observes or is informed that graffiti is present, to when an owner has to remove the graffiti, and when the village then would notify an owner, and they have to come into compliance to remove the graffiti. We shortened those time periods so that an owner has, and this is the same, 14 days from the date of occurrence to remove the graffiti. If the owner fails to remove the graffiti within that 14 days, we'll notify the owner by certified mail that he has an additional seven days to remove the graffiti. It's unlawful for the graffiti to remain after 14 days from the date of occurrence. That remains the same. And then we go into the language about, you know, the owner can ask the village to remove it and charge the cost to them. You know, maybe it's someone who's elderly and can't remove the graffiti, or the village can provide notification to the owner stating, "You either need to consent to the village removing the graffiti, or if you fail to provide your consent within 10 days from when you receive the request of the village, the village can go onto the property, remove the graffiti, charge the cost of the removal plus reasonable administrative costs to the owner, and lien the property." Pretty much consistent with what was in place last time. Let me see, what else is new? With the hardware store restrictions, the majority of the Board wanted language that the display of spray paint cans and similar items be under lock and key, so that is now in the ordinance. The rest remains the same. If you read, when you get to page five of the ordinance, Section 22-201, Display of Graffiti implements, that's the one that says, "Every hardware store shall restrict access to those items from the public by placing them behind a lock counter, cabinet, or other storage facility so that access to them cannot be gained without employee That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. The businesses that sell the spray paint were interviewed by the police department, and most of them did not have any problem with the ordinance. However, there was a comment about the cost that Bales Hardware would incur if they had to lock up the spray paint, so if you'd care to come forward and explain your situation, we would be happy to hear from you because most of us spend a
A lot of time.
Great deal of time coming in and out of yours.
Well, thank you, Mayor Ron, for recognizing me here at the meeting this evening, and the Board as well, giving me the opportunity to come and discuss my concerns. Really, I mean, expense is one thing as far as getting it locked under key. We did a remodel on our store a few years back, and ACE does studies. Anytime you put any product under lock and key, excuse me, you're going to suffer sales loss, even valuable items. If the consumer doesn't have access to the products, it becomes an inconvenience. Staff isn't there to allow them to get access to the products. They may choose not to purchase it. As we know, the economical time for any retail business isn't the best in our favor at this point. Anytime you can look at increasing your expenses and lowering your sales, it's definitely a concern to us as well. I personally don't know if locking it under key is really the answer, my opinion. I like the idea of asking for ID, having it under lock and key, and having the associates help the consumer purchase a product, still doesn't identify them or give them any reason to fear why they're purchasing the product. If they have to supply information at the point of sale with identification, those that might, excuse me, intend to use it in a wrongful way, might not choose to purchase it or leave that information if they are over 18. Currently, at our store, and even before, there was a rash of the activity in the community, we always refrain we always refrain from selling spray paint to minors, maybe sixteen, seventeen. Once the police approached us and told us there was a lot of activity, we took the opportunity to make signs and put that at eighteen, wondering if we had that legal right to ask for information or require identification at that point as a retail operation for our consumers. So, in our case, and I can't speak for all retailers, our paint is visible from our front desk, very visible. So, to watch that's not any problem. But to put it under lock and key and incur that expense, I think it would be more valuable, probably, to the police department, or lessen the activity of those individuals that purchased it for wrongdoing. If they had to provide information and a picture ID, that'd be more discouraging than just saying, "Hey, who was this guy that just bought paint?" Really doesn't help the situation. Yeah, we took them to the cabinet, we gained access. Is it in combination with identification? Do they still have to be eighteen, or is it just a matter of somebody has to help them get it out of the case? We really don't gain a lot of information from that. I think the information that's needed, that the police department may be looking for, is identification, or discouraging those that want to make the paint of the aerosol paint at point of purchase. I don't know what the answer is. I commiserate with all the homeowners and businesses that have suffered, you know, with that. Hopefully, it can be stifled. But I don't believe the lock and key was really the answer. I think, in my opinion, it'd be more having that identification and face them and have to prove ID and know that they're being watched, rather than just, "Here's your spray paint. Okay, there you go," and you lock it up, and away they go. So, that's my opinion. Of course, expense is a concern as well, you know, because we estimate maybe for the space that we have is maybe fifteen hundred dollars, two thousand to get glass cabinets and fixturing for that. And spray paint's a good category for us. There's a wide variety of colors. You've got to keep so much inventory for project quantities. So, you've got an investment in that. So, now if we take and incur an expense, and then lessen our sales by discouraging them to buy it, not those that shouldn't have it, but just regular consumers out of the inconvenience, it's a suffer for the category, you know? So, that's my opinion on it. Does everybody have any questions for me?
No, you know, I agree with what you're saying, and at our last meeting, I didn't. But I've been thinking about this, and I liken it to selling liquor, packaged goods, and cigarettes. We require IDs, but we don't require that those items be locked up. Now, along with that, occasional checks and stings come along, and I would hope that our police department would do the same with spray paint. Send somebody in there that's underage and see if they can buy it. And then there'd be a fine attached to it, and et cetera, et cetera. But it was interesting, on the survey, if I remember right, many of the stores had no problem with locking them up and thought their costs would be very low. You have a huge inventory.
Yeah.
I mean, because you carry so many different kinds.
Sure, yeah, it's about maybe twenty, maybe sixteen feet.
Yeah, it's, you've got a lot.
Oh, there's a lot of SKUs, a lot of items.
I can see for you where it would be different than some of the other stores.
How much of it is annually shoplifted?
That's the thing. I was approached with that. We looked at it. We did a quick cycle count, looked at our inventory, our purchases, and the shrinkage has been really nominal or nonexistent. So, I don't think it's a fact of them stealing, at least from our location, I can't speak for all retailers that sell aerosol paint products, but our shrinkage has been, I'd almost have to say, none, or very, very marginal, did not even draw a concern, where we wouldn't be concerned or red flagged, you know, with the quantities that would be missing.
Maybe the fact that it's within view of your, you know, your cash registers and everything is a factor, but it's not a secret that most of the time, people who are using spray paint don't bother to pay for it. And that was the, the idea of asking that it be locked up was not to, certainly not to dissuade people, but was to stop the shoplifting of it, because that's how it's often acquired.
Yeah, shoplifting, I'm sorry.
People that do that know that a lot of times, the checkout counters are subject to video surveillance, or there's a history with a, even a cash receipt. So, it's easier to just stick it in your pocket and exit the store than it is to buy it.
I'd give that some thought, too. I was talking to this with my father. If they don't purchase the paint, say, in Westmont, they could buy it somewhere else. And if they don't even buy it somewhere else, it's usually accessible in any household, or a friend's household in a garage. Almost everybody has some spray paint at home. So, whether they're stealing it, buying it legitimately, buying it in another location, I don't think necessarily locking it up in our community is going to prevent them from getting access to spray paint.
Some downers are locked up, too.
You know?
I don't know how widespread it is, but I do know they're locked up.
Does the state have a program for locking it up? I mean, other stores, ACE stores, have this issue where they have to lock up their paint?
No, I don't know. I know Chicago had a big deal with this a few years back, with eighteen and older for spray paint. ACE doesn't encourage anything locked behind lock and key. Studies show anytime anything's put behind glass, that it lessens your sales for the inconvenience for the consumer. Even high-end blades and power tool accessories, and power tools we have open recently, a couple of years back, we did notice a shrinkage in some of our power tool accessories, so we were able to buy some used fixturing from an ACE store that was closing in Romeoville. And it still was not that economical used. Even if we already recouped the investment into locking it, it's just the suffer of the sales that we may have from that point forward in the whole category. And it's a good category for us. We get, you know...
How many cans have you got on display?
We would have, if I could do a quick estimation, it would be three, six, nine, twelve, twelve times six, seventy-two, two eighty-eight, times twelve feet. We could have anywhere from nine to probably about nine hundred cans, potentially, at any time, because of the depth. There's so many colors, varieties, sheens, you know, water-based, decorative, and then you have to have project quantities. You can't just have two cans. You've got to have six or eight there in case somebody needs more than two.
To be fair to everybody, how do we say no to you and yes to everybody else?
Sure. I think other retailers would probably suffer the same loss in sales, just because that's the norm for the industry. If it's under lock and key, you're going to lose sales.
I think if somebody was going to do an art project or paint something, and they go to your store to buy paint, and they have to ask for it, they're going to, and you say, "I have to go get it because it's under lock and key," they're going to say, "No, I'm going to go to Woodridge instead," or Downers Grove, or somewhere else?
Well, the small section that we put in for our power tools, because ever since we put in taller fixturing, they're eighty-four inches high, so it creates a maze, so you don't have total visibility of the store at all times. Customers can get lost in between the aisles. We put a buzzer. We have a wireless doorbell that says, "Please ring bell for assistance in case the staff doesn't realize somebody's in that aisle and needs help getting something out of the locked tool cabinets." I've seen customers leave or get frustrated, or poke their heads out of the aisles, or put their arms up like this, and you're busy with people, you're on the telephone, whatever you have to do. So, most of the time, you could address it, but you may not always be there to address it. Potentially, they could leave, or not make the purchase. It's possible.
I'll take one quick second. Which trustee, while I'm up? Do you have a video surveillance system? No. I was going to say, one option could be an option of security and locking it up. If you had a video surveillance system in your, in your business, that you would dedicate a camera to just that section alone, that way, if we did incur an incident, we could come back and see if it was shoplifting, and go back and actually get a picture of our suspect and see if we could match something up. I would say maybe it's an option other than to the locking of the case, but the video system probably going to cost you just as much as the case.
The expense, the initial investment would probably be the same, but the loss of sales would be less, because it'd be open. It'd still be accessible to the consumer. You know, for one example, last weekend, we had three students from Westmont High come in, and one of the cashiers is a Westmont student as well, and she recognized these three students and knew what their project was. And they came and legitimately did buy spray paint. We denied them. We said, "Sorry, that's just the way it is." We got, police have asked us kindly if, at this point, until something gets in place, would we please refrain from selling any aerosol paint products to anybody that is under the age of eighteen? And they left. I said, "Can your parents come back?" And we didn't see them again. I don't know if they came back the next day or not, but we're good at enforcing that. I think any of the retailers that would hope they wouldn't have to put it under lock and key, or if they don't have surveillance, have to add that, that would ask for the ID. I think the ID would at least discourage those. I mean, it would all boil down to the thievery. So, it's not the ID, it's who would steal it. So, in our case, we have good visual on our paint products, but I don't know...
And some of our intelligence with our recent problems has indicated that it may be being shoplifted, and not necessarily at Bales, but as being shoplifted, where we don't know, and that's one of the reasons why this concern is off.
Mm-hmm.
I guess, I guess for the board, maybe some type of video surveillance, something else, if the cabin isn't locked. I think that would suffice. That way, if we had an incident, we could go back and review the video, which is probably better than locking up. The registration, again, is important, but not as important as we're thinking of shoplifting.
Yeah, it seems like the key thing is not who's buying it, it's who's stealing it.
Correct, yes, yes.
I know, in our case, our shrinkage is minimal or none, you know, but who knows what the other retailers, what position they're in.
Yes.
You know, so...
But we still have to talk about fairness for the other businesses who understand it and are willing to do it, because they understand the problem also. So, if we say no to you, what do we say to them?
Mm-hmm, understand.
The ordinance says originally drafted was a little broader, and said either the aerosol paint cans be locked up, or be in an area under the direct visual observation of a clerk or cashier. You thought last meeting that was a little too broad and directed it to be under lock and key.
I don't think anybody has the luxury of having clerks that can watch one thing in a store.
And some stores only have one person working in them.
Right.
So, if they're helping somebody, how can they watch that at the same time? It's a perfect time to get hit.
I don't know, let's say, when steps or stages start first with maybe it's visible to where it can be seen, and see if that lessens the activity. I don't know if there's any way to identify where the point of purchase, or if it was stolen, where the origin would be. You know, I mean, outside of, you know, we sell a lot of ACE label paint, but we have Westolium, national brands, and other things, so those products are sold just about everywhere. And a lot of stores, their point of sale, they don't use stickers. You know, they use a barcode, so you can't even identify the origin of where the paint was anyhow. I just think spray paint, aerosol paint products are so prevalent and easily accessible in garages, or at any store in our community and outside, that just locking them under lock and key in our community, I don't know if that would really, in my opinion, solve the problem. It was only sold in Westmont.
Evidently, it's worked in other communities, and so that's the reason people do it.
I mean, I understand what you're saying, and not to, not to beleaguer the issue, but if you're going to tag something, old spray paint doesn't work as good.
And also, you would think if somebody was going to steal spray paint, if I was somebody that was setting rations fires, I wouldn't steal the lighter fluid and get caught. I would think I'd be a suspect. I would try to legitimately buy it or obtain it somewhere else. Why put yourself in that position? You know, you're like putting yourself in a position to say, "Okay, I've gotten away with this how long? Now, I'm going to steal the spray paint." And at that point, there might be a connection.
Well, you're a normal person.
I was going to say, these people aren't too great. The ones we're talking about.
Yeah, your thought process is way too straight down the middle of the road. Yeah.
Well, that's my opinion. If anybody, any questions? That's about all I can put as input on my end as a retailer, would be, so...
I have a tendency to be a little more lenient, also, in your situation. Would it be possible to get the spray paint closer to the actual checkout counter?
It's very close, Mayor Ron.
It's right there.
The cashiers, they're two stations, and what it is with a purple jacket is visible. Our spray paint is right there.
The cashier turns to the left, and there it is.
But like the gentleman said, you know, it's, it's got to be consistent for all retailers, unless all retailers were asked to put it in a more visible place. But depending on their planogram and their layout, they may or may not have that option. It just so happens, we have the luxury that we have in proximity of the cash register.
So, it's all visible from the cashier's
Absolutely.
...area.
But some stores may have it buried back in a department, you know, whether they can relocate it or not, I'm not certain, you know? It's just the lock and key thing seems like a lot, you know, with the expense of installing it, and then the loss of sales. So, where you're incurring an expense and you're suffering sales, it kind of kills the category.
Chief, I can't remember how Hobby Lobby responded, because their paint is, you know, at an odd area of the store, where there's really nobody around to, you know, clerks just aren't there.
Hobby Lobby replied that they have approximately five hundred cans on the floor at any one time. They currently check IDs for any around eighteen-year-old and do not sell to anyone under eighteen. They have no problem with checking on the IDs, so it was one of the questions asked in all their cells and taking info, information on the sales if we needed. They estimated that it approximately costs seven hundred dollars for a case. Yet other Hobby Lobby stores already have them, so it would not be a hardship for them to obtain one.
I can appreciate the cost. I can appreciate saying, "Well, maybe somebody won't buy a can of spray paint." But the devastation to this town, and to not only morale, but property and everything else, to see Cup Killer and other types of graffiti, until that stops and we can say, you know, "Take the cases away, and we think they've all moved on and have been discouraged long enough." But when I see what, you know, the entire sides of somebody's business being tagged with just something obscene, or something threatening somebody's life, I think the impact of this on the residents of the town, and the building owner, and even people driving through, to me, is more important to stop than to guess that maybe, maybe you'll sell less. But I agree with Trustee Scott. You know, if I have something to do, if I'm redoing the tops of the tables on my deck, and I'm using spray paint, I'm going to buy spray paint, you know? And it's, if I got to, if I got to use Claritin, I'm going to stand there at Walgreens till they can unlock the, unlock the case. I mean, that's, that's the way it is. And to see what we've seen in this town is just, I'm not willing to risk that, that it increases because, you know, you think maybe you won't sell as, as much.
I could definitely commiserate with the other residents that have suffered the activities and business owners. We had that happen to us years ago, along with building products down the street from us. You know, we had a paint over the north side of our building at the time. Like I said, if somebody is willing to steal, and they can't gain access at our store, and they're adamant that that's the activities they're going to do, I'm sure they're going to find it somewhere, whether they travel a town or two towns away, or ask a friend to bring it from another town away, or however. I don't think locking it under key to prevent theft is, is going to detour the activity.
If people want drugs, they're going to find them, but we like to make it difficult.
And people, I know they have drinking age of twenty-one, and there's a lot of underage drinkers that can obtain alcohol. Whether they buy it locked up in Westmont or in another community, they're adamant they're going to get it.
Any other comments?
Yeah, Chief, did you ask the other stores what their shrinkage rate was? You know, I mean, I definitely, I understand your point, you know, and I understand the value of the residents. It's an important issue. We need to obviously do something about it, but just curious, what, I mean, he said it's not an issue.
That was one of, that was not one of the issues in our...
I think that's an important question, because we find out that, you know, we think it's getting stolen, but in reality, it's really not. People are just buying it. You know, just having the ID in here, instance, where you can see it in front of you, I think that suffices. You know, maybe it's, this is a perfect example of, you know, let's see if the business owners can take charge. They know it's an issue. They know that we're concerned about it, so, you know, we're sincerely concerned about it. Maybe they'll step up to the plate before we have to create an extra restriction on them and make them do something that's, you know, counterproductive, really, that could potentially hurt your sales. And, you know, ACE Hardware does probably have the biggest array of spray paints, and I just, I'd like to see that figure, I think.
We can have that for you by Monday.
Yeah, thank you.
That's a good point.
And that stuff is tracked. I mean, retail has to track their shrinkage.
Yeah, but nobody ever wants to admit whether they're getting stolen either. For a retailer, I'll tell you, we talk about it, and people don't want to say, "Oh, yeah, I'm getting hit." It's an embarrassment.
Yeah.
I've got, I've got two issues to deal with here. Initially, I will have to say that lock and key was the way to go. I'm not, I guess, I hearken to some of this with property value. We got tagged in front of our building. That's when I first found out the responsibility of the property owner and being served by the village. I am vehemently opposed to the way that's handled. If we have a scenario, we talk about going in and leaning the property, the village coming in and cleaning it up, we tried seven different products. Stan can attest to this. None of them worked. Couldn't get rid of it. Seven different products that were sp... were specified for this. We have a drive-it system on the front of our building, so if you try to scrub that off and trying to match the paint color is almost an impossibility. My question would be, with the fantastic public works department that we have, if they know of an item or a product that maybe our residents might be able to purchase from them that we definitely know works, instead of having to go out and buy five or six different products to try to clean this off the side of a building. I just.
That's a guessing game.
But this is one of those things that I kind of hearken, and Chief's probably going to get a little upset with what I'm about to say, but you're putting a burden on a homeowner or a business owner to clean up something that they had nothing to do with.
Yeah, but they want it on their house anyhow. They're going to leave it there forever?
Well, but if a car drives through the homeowner's fence, the homeowner fixes it. Nobody else does.
No, but I'm saying, I'm saying from a business standpoint, there have been several instances in this town that businesses have been hit, and that's an expense. Cutting it down to 14 days is a pretty short period of time. So let's say in the middle of the winter in January, snow is flying, it's zero degrees. You've got 14 days to get the stuff off the outside of the building. No. I mean, that's one thing that I'm just, this is one of those things that it's, it's like, okay, I understand the responsibility of removing the graffiti. I really do. But then to come around and say to a business owner or a homeowner, if you don't do it, we're either going to fine you or we're going to go ahead and take care of it, we're going to send you a bill for it.
What's the alternative?
I mean.
Yeah, what is the alternative?
Well, like I said, is there a product out there that we know, or maybe someone can tell us, that really works?
Excuse me, Lee. Did we suggest the graffiti aerosol remover when it didn't work either? That's about the best we got.
Actually, what happens is it smudges.
I can, I was a victim of graffiti as well. Luckily, mine was on a Saturday night into a Sunday morning. I headed off, I found out at about nine o'clock in the morning, I headed down by noon. And I went to Ace Hardware, and I'll get you the name of the stuff, but it's on siding, and I had to stand with a scrub brush and scrub and scrub and scrub. Your power scrubbing, you know, like power washing may do something. I had the fortunate timing of the beat on the weekend. Had it been a Monday night, I don't know when I would have been able to get to it, would I have been able to get to it in bits and pieces, not the whole thing. Our advice is that it has to come down quickly. The sooner it comes down, it doesn't invite other re-tagging. And we haven't seen that where it's inviting other tagging. Usually see that in when there's two gangs going at each other or two disputes going, and you'll see the re-tagging over the other. It's our advice to get it down as quickly as possible. First of all, it's unattractive and unsightly, and we want it down. We don't want the message out there. And as I said, on mine, mine was a gel. I had to spray it on and scrub brush and scrub brush. It took me approximately a good, I'd say, five hours to get it done. But I was on siding. I don't know what your material was.
Well, Trustee Fleming, right now it's 14 days, and then you get a certified letter for another seven days. So it's really 21. Would you feel more comfortable with 21 and then your seven days under official notice? Gives you a month to get it off. And a month is a long time to have something like that.
Yeah, I'd like a better deal with that.
Well, and plus you have, when you get that letter saying it has to be down in seven days.
Well, now you're in the.
Or provide your consent within 10 days and the village will do it. So we're still waiting 10 more days after the letter is received.
Okay, so you've got 14, 7, 21, 31 days, potentially.
Yeah, that's assuming the notice goes out the next day.
I think most business owners want to get it off as fast as they can anyway.
Sure.
But when they run into a problem where they can't get it off, that extra time could be needed.
And I think the village has been lenient in other issues, where if it is 20 below zero and you can't get it off, that's an understandable, right?
Or you're trying. Nobody's going to send code enforcement over there because you're trying to get it off and it's, you know.
Yeah.
You know, they sprayed varnish on top too, so it would look nice.
Now, if it's just sitting there and no one has touched it, that's a different issue.
We don't want to get to the point where this is a continuous, reoccurring problem all the time, and it spreads. That's why we have to do what we're doing now.
Nip it in the bud now.
Yeah, I like forcing the cleanup. I think that's important because you're going to get homes where renters are in it, or businesses or renters, and they don't care what the outside look like. So let's face it.
Hey, what if the guy wants to sell his house next to it, and somebody comes, potential person looks at it and sees it?
I mean, Ellen, your train ride into the city?
Oh, my God.
Okay. Some of that graffiti's been there for years, years.
No, I think that's an important part of it, yeah.
The L-2O hair, it's like, you know.
Wars. I'm just not convinced that locking it up is going to benefit any, unless all the other stores come back and say, hey, we have a shrinkage of 25%. It's flying off the shelves. Well, then, yeah, then I think we have to lock it up. But, you know, here's one example of, they're not stealing. You know, and I know you've got a big area to make a big, that's a big case. And I know you've probably had the supplies, but Ace Hardware probably has restrictions on how it has to look. And that's probably going to be pricey, you know. And where someone like a Hobby Lobby that didn't mind it, they're a bigger organization, it's a drop in the bucket. Where a smaller business like Ace Hardware, I just would be more comfortable waiting to see what the other shrinkage rates were before I voted on it.
Well, on the one hand, you've got a big company who doesn't sell as much, and you've got a small company who probably sells more than anybody else in the whole town.
Yeah.
Has a bigger inventory of it.
So we could discuss this issue for the next two hours.
No, we can't.
However, the only point that we've requested additional information is on the pilferage from the other purveyors of spray paint. So if you could get that, Tom, by Monday.
We'll have it by 5:00 tomorrow, send it to the village manager's office, to the information report, and then on Monday, we can publicly announce what that is as well.
And we know for certain that Downers and, you know, our bordering communities, Oprah, you know, do they have similar ordinances? Do we know that for a fact?
I checked with Downers Grove Deputy Chiefs today. They have the same age restrictions, requirement IDs. They do not.
But not locked up?
Locked up.
Yeah, their East doesn't lock it up.
So if we lock it up, you know, chances are they're going to go to Oprah or someplace else, buy it and bring it back anyway. That's the chance you take.
Depends on also being a crime of opportunity. If someone wants to do it now, they may not want to travel far and do it, you know, Bales or another place in town.
You know, or we're saying 18. Some 19-year-old comes in and buys it then. I mean, there's always a way to beat the system.
Correct.
Unfortunately.
I'm also in favor of the timelines as are recommended in the ordinance. Okay, if we can get that information, we'll continue our discussion on Monday. Thank you. Moving right along. Thank you for coming in, Mr. Vale. Curfew hours ordinance. For the considered ordinance, I would change curfew hours and raise the maximum age to 17.
So the ordinance is attached. It follows the Chicago example per your direction as far as the staggered age and time restrictions. I think a question, there may be a question about the defenses to the curfew. As originally drafted, it was a defense if the minor is accompanied by the child's parent, legal guardian, or a sibling who is at least 21 years of age. Based on at least some comments at the last meeting, the sibling who is at least 21 years of age has been stricken from this version. Last, the other, another defense that has been stricken from this version is that the minor is accompanied by a person who is at least 21 years of age and known and approved by the minor's parent or legal guardian. There are arguments on both sides of the fence, so I'm just throwing that out there. I know the chief may have some comments about those.
I've had some people approach me as well. One person approached and said that if it's a family member, daughter's out, and it's an uncle, who's a legitimate family, this ordinance would prevent that. I understand the counterargument in that is that if we make an arrest and it comes time to contact the parent, the parent in lieu of saying, okay, I don't want my child arrested, yeah, I approved that person, and in fact, they may not have. That's a problem that we would run into. I was just asked, you know, bring something with the other family member. I agree, probably a sibling is something that should be stricken. I agree with that. But, or either that or we talked about today, what would be immediate family, and do we identify what immediate family would be? And then that way, our officers have a groundwork of where they can start from. So if you have an aunt or an uncle, grandparent or something like that, if you strike that, you have no options for that. Or in this case, if we state immediately family and identify what immediate family is, that might give us some options.
Immediate family usually includes a sibling.
Eliminate the sibling part, because I can understand how that could be fraught with problems.
The only thing that I would hope, now, I'm going to give you what I see are two scenarios. One is the officers pull over a car and there's a kid, a little kid in the backseat, and there's two adults in the front, and they're like, he's our nephew, and, oh my God, you know, you've got a kid out after curfew and you're an aunt and uncle. I would hope in that situation, the discretion that the officer would have would kick in, and we would not do something silly. So, I mean, so do you, obviously.
Yes.
The other situation is down by Trustee Senek and I has become punk land. And, you know, they, there are all kinds of sizes. And the bigger ones are the ones that don't let the littler ones anywhere near the basketball courts now. So, and they're all on foot. So being with somebody who happens to be of less reputable character, but he's 21 or he's 17, and whether he's a brother, he could be an uncle, but he's out from the city and he's not acting very well. He's bringing his.
See what you're saying?
Stuff with him. I would rather take the risk that, I would, it's not a risk, I would rather say with confidence that our officers would know when something would be inappropriate to enforce it. But in punk land, we need it.
I understand. I was just saying, it was a comment that was brought to me, and John and I talked about it, and I agree, I see, I see your point as well. Yes. Again, the sibling, we can understand, and we run across that. Well, my, this is my 19-year-old brother, okay? Well, you're both stealing, and you're both out after curfew, but he's my 19-year-old brother, so you can't charge me with curfew. I could see where that could be, again, the opportunity for opening a window or getting something out of something that we don't want to happen.
Comment, there's a parental responsibility section now that's been added. The board's removed.
And Chief, I'm glad about that because down where we live, the bigger ones now are launching the little ones over the fences.
We'll work on that.
Any other questions?
Well, I would hope that by enacting this also, it might help with some of the other stuff that's going on, because, I mean, we know that we've had issues within park district property in the past. And I would like to think that most responsible parents would see to it that their children are where they should be at a particular given time, a reasonable time. But then again, you got to start somewhere.
One important component for us is the parental responsibility. If a child's out and it's honestly a mistake and it happens one time, it's remedial action, getting arrested, having to go to court and having to pay a fine. It usually doesn't happen again. But with the group that we're seeing, it just tends to be, okay, well, mom and dad will pay the fine. I really don't care. Financial burden's on the parents. Parents go to court and they keep on paying the fine. Judge keeps on upping the fine. But we really think that, you know, if the parents also were held responsible as well as there should be, there should be more parental responsibility, especially if there's misbehavior, then this may also address that situation as well. And I believe that's what Chicago is also looking at, and hopefully it'll work.
What do we have set as a bottom line fine on the offense?
For village ordinance, $75 is the minimum fine that you could charge for village ordinance. The judge, that's the lowest fine he can go. Maximum $750, and that's set by ordinance.
But now we could set the ordinance like we have in several other cases, can't we?
You could either lower that fine or raise that.
I'm not lowering it.
I have to see.
No, no, no.
You could raise it, and also raise the, I yield to John, I think you could raise the maximum as well, too. The judge uses several criteria in his fine. If you're a first-time offender, it usually gives you the minimum. If, and sometimes he can also make it no fine and just costs, that's the judge's purview. However, what we do is we go with matters of aggravation and mitigation, and where mitigation is, your honor, this is the first time, there's an extenuating circumstances, the judge can waive the fine. Matters of aggravation, as this is the fifth time this person's been arrested for this, we could ask for a higher fine, and the judge takes that into consideration. But the maximum fine any judge can issue for any village ordinance is 750.
Well, if I remember correctly, the other part of the Chicago ordinance was the first fine was 500 bucks.
That's for the parent, parental, for the parental responsibility, yes.
That's what I'm saying.
If we could, you could set that limit in there, if that's what you still choose, I believe, again, I'd yield to John on that. But the judge, again, would take that into consideration, either he'd start anywhere 75 and go on up, first-time offense, or if you wish to start at 500.
So even if we set our bottom line, we're saying at $500, and the judge can override that and go, well, this is a first-time offense, I'm going to lower that down to.
Not if you set it at a minimum of $500. If that's the fine he has to set at, that's the lowest he can go. I believe that's it. But the judge could also waive the fine, which means you're not paying it off.
Sorry, Chief. I think that we should leave it where it is because we're changing the hours. And if somebody gets caught unawares, they're a responsible parent, but, you know, they'll get whacked with a $500 fine. That we leave it where it is, and if there's incidences of repeated behavior, then we put more teeth in it.
And again, plus two. Again, when the officer and our village prosecutor, you know, realizes that this is a second or third-time offender, the judge starts to get used to seeing people and also kind of remembers it, and they bring that up in the matters of aggravation. That's why she will, our village prosecutor, automatically ask for a higher fine, and explain to the judge, your honor, this is the third time this person's been in front of you. This is why we're doing it.
Can we also work with the school districts to make sure that this gets on their website or sent home with the kids, so that people are aware of this change?
What I probably would recommend is probably a two-week grace period or a warning period. And then at that time, too, we will endeavor to get the media aware of this. Hopefully, I can have a meeting with them on Monday, reference this, as well as the schools, as I mentioned before. They have these electronic backpacks. We can put it out. And also, on Channel 6, we'll put something up. All our usual media websites and everything, our media release process, we will cover. And again, I would like to maybe recommend a two-week warning period. It would still get maybe charged for the curfew if it was, like the old, we'll see. Unless it's, if it's one of our repeat offenders, I would not be leaning towards a warning.
Mr. Zemnic, can we, in the course of doing, like, when the chief sends out notice through electronic backpack or anything, even though it's not in the ordinance, can he, in his preparatory paragraph, say there will not be vacation hours and summer hours to this? So people don't think this is something we're doing for school year, that this is...
Certainly. He can editorialize as he sees fit, as long as it's consistent with the wording of the ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, this will be, this will be seven days a week, 24 hours a day.
Round.
Yeah. Or during these time periods, there'll be no exception for holidays. There'll be no exception for vacation, summertime, this, once this is set. There hasn't been in the past, there will not be in the future.
Okay. I'd appreciate it if you could.
And I will say, the electronic backpack does work real well.
We're using it.
You're able to pull, the information comes directly to either whichever email you'd want it sent to.
We've asked for these to coffee with the chief to go to both the marker school district and District 201. However, we However, we will also try to enlist the aid of the Hinsdale School District as well as Downers Grove, North and South, because some of our students do go there as well. So, we will, through our school resource officer network with Officer Detective Gomor Sett, we'll reach out to the local towns and the other school resource officers as well.
Well, what if maybe you gave the chief over in Hinsdale a call and the chief over in Downers a call and said, this is what we're doing, and granted, that's okay, but if their chief then says to, you know, you have some students that may be attending our schools that live in Westmont, this is what they're getting ready to do.
I'd rather have, either I will do it myself or, because I do have a relationship with Dr. Wall in Hinsdale.
That's fine.
Downers, south and north, I do have some contacts there. We will, I can do it from, at my level, to the superintendent level and then follow up with the school resource officer level as well, too.
Holy Trinity as well.
Right, we'll send it out to all the schools, we'll try to do a parental notification, everybody, the church notices and everything.
Great.
That's why I'd like to maybe give a two-week warning period on this before enforcing this. Give us a chance to get the word out, because if it's passed Monday, I don't want, you know, Tuesday going out making the arrest. We'll try to continue with our current ordinance until after the two-week warning period.
Stay right where you are, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Next item, automated traffic law enforcement system. Board to hear a presentation by the police department, providing a six-month review on the automated traffic enforcement program.
Mayor, now wait for the monitors to come up. Ever since beginning our red light enforcement program, we provide a six-month overview. Some of the information you'll see is for the last six-month period, some information is also for the entire program. The following statistics are based on activity at the intersection Naperville and Cass starting March 2nd, 2009 and ending August 31st. Naperville and Cass is the only intersection in Westmont that has a red light camera system. We have two cameras or two approaches at that intersection, southbound Cass from just at north of Naperville and westbound Naperville Road right at Cass Avenue. Our officers have viewed suspected violations of 13,201. Of those, 3,312 or 25% were approved and you'll see that they're overwhelmingly disapproving or not approving the majority, so 9,889 or 75% of those suspected violations were not approved. And the reason for that is the threshold and the level that our officers are using, we're not going to ones where they went past beyond the white line or they kind of, the officers have to feel that if this was a violation they saw while they were on patrol, that they would stop and write a citation for. That's their level that they use in making determinations as to whether a red light camera violation will be issued. Of those violations, 13,104 or 99.27% turned right. We don't know why, but we saw an increase, we believe, from last six months of straight violations or 58 violations or 43, 0.43% proceeded straight and 39 violations or 0.30% turned left. Officers spent approximately 311 hours reviewing videos. We had an officer on light duty assisting in records for an extended period of time. That officer was trained and did the majority of the videos for the time he was in the records division. If that's not, it's reviewed by other officers, sergeants and deputy chief Brenza. All videos are reviewed by on-duty personnel, no overtime is involved in the review of the videos. As we save pictures, tell a thousand words. Looking southbound Cass. Westbound Naperville Road. There was no left turn green arrow. Southbound Cass and notice the weather conditions as well. Kinda almost.
Yeah. Oh, let's just, let's just keep going. Use this turn, check or the turn left, go left.
In southbound Cass.
Oh. School buses, no?
No.
Oh, now they're...
Yeah.
They don't get to you, boy. I mean, really, there's not much traffic, they probably would have been...
That's the same car?
No. Well, I haven't seen the license, but I can say for sure.
Looked like the same car.
Oh, I should have stopped.
Okay, I'll stop now. You put a speed bump right in a minute. There you...
This is my all-time favorite.
Go around, run the red.
There is no left turn arrow.
My god.
Wow.
Man, he's, oh, my, that does look like the same guy.
Yeah, this is my other favorite. So, those are just some of the violations and usually...
You had any fatal accidents at that intersection?
No, Mayor, in reviewing, we've had only one accident in the direction of the cameras, either southbound on Cass or westbound Naperville. We're still correcting our data, but for the swing, as Deputy Chief Brenza advised, we've only had two accidents at that intersection. I guess what you would say, you'll have opponents and proponents of the red light camera system. Had you not had those cameras there, the violations which you just observed would have gone unenforced. Yes, you'll see that the right turn on reds are predominantly the major violation there, but here again, you saw 58, well, those 58 that went straight through, that would have gone unnoticed and gotten away with. So, in my mind, the system is a viable system. For revenue, since March 1st, 2011 through August 31st, 2011, the village has received $12,488.65 in fines. The approximate costs associated with the administration of the program for the same time period were $5,057.31. That figure includes the payment for the adjudicator for the monthly adjudication hearings that the adjudicator attends, as well as the officer's time. We keep track of the officer's time, even though it's no, he's on duty, we keep track so that we can understand how much we're actually paying into this program. After cost, the village has realized $7,431.34 from the program over the past six months. There is an outstanding $9,900 due to the village because of later unpaid violations. Since the inception of the program, the village has received $95,808.79 and we began the program live issuing violations on March 2nd, 2009. Costs associated with the administration of this program through August 31st are $2,460.24 and all the village has realized $73,348.55. Accident data, it's in the number of accidents in the same direction as the red light cameras, you'll see statistically since 2008. For 2011, for the first eight months, there's only been one accident, which is a decrease in the direction of the cameras. And since the installation of the red light photo enforcement, we aren't aware of any accidents at Cass and Naperville where the cameras played any role in the cause of the action or caused any driver to overreact due to the camera's presence. Basically, what that means is people, the other argument was, is that people will see the light turning yet, they'll slam on their brakes and you'll have rear-end accidents, accidents caused by someone, you know, stopping and not going through, maybe somebody staying at the red light, not wanting to turn right. In all our accident investigations at that intersection, we have not had anything evidence showing that those were the case. Since beginning of the program, we've seen a reduction in the number of approved violations, as you can tell, it's going down. It were down to now 699 for the last, since this year, for August 31st compared to the previous years. And a reduction in number of suspected or approved violations is an indicator that the enforcement program is effective, we're changing driver habits. Usually, the drivers, most of them are residents, know it's there, they know to be careful, they know to watch it. We believe at the beginning, we probably had some residents who were violators, hopefully not, that's not the case that much anymore. I'll take any questions that you may have of me.
Just a comment, recently, a community, and I, it escapes me, which community, they had removed their red light cameras.
I believe it was Lombard.
And accidents went up, so now they put it back in.
That I don't know.
It was in the paper about a month ago.
I know Schaumburg removed one and that was because there was a lot of controversy with that one and I believe Lombard recently moved theirs, but I'm not sure if they put theirs back in.
I told you from the start, I thought it made all of us more cautious and more conscientious about right turns and lights. And I still believe that because it certainly has made me more conscientious.
And I can talk from personal experience, again, you know, it's, if the right turn on reds is still a valid violation, but not only, it's dangerous. Again, when you pull up to the intersection, just think about it, the next time you're driving, think, where are you concentrating your vision? Your vision is concentrating to the left because that is where the threat is going to come from. You're going to pull into traffic, the threat's coming from, so we all monitor the left. We never look back to the right to see what's coming from the right. And many a times, the stop signs, stoplights, you have to look to the right and here's a person standing there watching me waiting to see what I'm going to do and/or, you know, walk in front of you, and especially if you're out listening for donations.
And this is just one stoplight.
Yes.
This happens everywhere, all over the community, every stoplight.
Yep.
It's just the norm everywhere.
And there is an update as well, too, we keep on coming to you every six months. We were hopeful that the county was going to change their vision and direction and allow red light cameras in county-controlled intersections. We've been told that that's not going to happen, there's nothing new on that and it's pretty much dead in the water at this time. That would help us, we believe, down at 63rd and Cass. When we began the program, we had hoped to have lights at Cass and Ogden and also route 83 and Ogden. However, at 83 and Ogden, the state says it's not really warranted by the counts that we have. We tend to disagree, we've appealed it twice, they turned us down. We can appeal a third time, but, you know, you have to, I guess, yield to their decision. And Cass and Ogden, right now, the studies we've had show that the numbers aren't there, but we're going to ask to revisit that again to see, again, if the violations aren't there.
Has it ever been thought about doing it at the tracks since that is the most dangerous cross, you know, probably area in the whole town?
I believe we could, Steve's not, are those, Harvey?
Did you hear the question?
Is Burlington and Cass a village-owned intersection?
Yes.
It is? It would be able to, that's why we're able to do it Naperville and Cass, because they're village-owned thing. We could do a study there to see.
The Burlington and Cass question, though, that I don't know the answer, but there's a complication with the ICC and having it interconnected with the railroad, so there's issues, I believe that that wouldn't be permitted.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, with our wonderful state legislators as well as our county legislators, is there any way that we can find out what their problem is? Or they could give us an answer as to why they just keep pushing this off? Or they don't want to talk about it, or what?
Well, they've had a number of public meetings about it. It's been a split perspective at their committee level. They've had like a third in favor of it, a third not in favor, a third that were kind of on the fence. It varies with the individual, some of it's philosophical, they just don't like the idea of the cameras, others, you know, it's hard to say, it's an individual-by-individual basis. I don't know, Chief, have you been to some of those committee meetings where they've discussed?
Not recently because of the overwhelming feeling that we were getting was that there wasn't going to go through. Of concern was how money was going to be. At one point, they were going to want a portion of our violations. There's also, do you set a flat license fee per intersection, where that money's going to go? I have not attended them recently because it started to get the feeling that it wasn't going to come to fruition.
So it all comes down to the almighty dollar again, who's going to get their cut?
I also look to it, I think they look at the program overall.
Yeah, I mean, you know, forget the safety aspects and everything else, it's all about who's going to get what money.
Well, it's also true, as it was here, it's also a controversial, controversial subject. You have proponents and opponents to it. I believe that's also...
But I mean, you know, I guess my whole thing is, look at the statistics for that intersection. I would think any deterrent that you could put in an intersection that is one of the ones in the county, you'd want to do something about it. But then again, I understand, maybe I'm being cynical or whatever, but it all comes down to who's going to get their cut out of a package and I think that's just ridiculous. I really do.
Anything else?
Oh, your honor.
So do we reanalyze and hear back from the chief in six months or do we go to a year?
I think a year.
Go to a year.
Year.
I agree.
Thank you. We are required by law to have summaries and everything at, by year, you know, year summaries to the, for the state. That will be forward to you, but thank you, that would help our staff and...
Yeah, that's good.
Statistics, we keep monthly statistics and keep track, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Next item, 206 East Richmond, zoning code variance request. Board to consider ordinance approving a zoning code variance to allow for the coverage, lot coverage greater than 35% for the purpose of constructing a swimming pool.
Good evening, Mayoral Committee. Name is Mary Redneck. We would like to install a pool in our backyard and above ground. We are asking for a lot variance, a lot coverage variance.
The good news is, when it rains, it goes in the pool.
Which we can plenty of.
And even if you have a pool cover, it goes on the pool cover, not, it's not like concrete.
Indeed.
So I don't have any problem with it.
I don't have any problem with it either.
I have no issue.
Thanks for sitting there so long waiting to make your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Everyone approves?
Nope. Be on for Monday, huh?
Indicated a possible approval. Thank you for coming in, this will be on our agenda for Monday evening.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we'll just do, we just do a quick vote and that's it.
All right.
You can kind of tell where it's going.
Okay, have a good evening.
Next item, 333 East Ogden, zoning code variance request. Board to consider an ordinance approving a zoning code variance to increase the number of allowable signs.
So, the purpose of our request for the variance is to complete a promise that we made to the neighbors and the neighborhood, which was that we would have a prominent ingress/egress on Ogden Avenue and this sign is to make the Ogden Avenue entrance and exit to our facility prominent. And it's, there is a monument sign at the corner of Ogden and Richmond and there's a monument sign at the Blackhawk Drive ingress/egress and this is a sign for Ogden Avenue. And we're well under the allowable square footage based on the size of the development.
Looks good.
Got no problem with it, the request was made, so, got to have a way to get in.
That's right.
Got to know where it is, so...
Building looks great.
Oh, thank you.
Can't wait. Yeah, I have no problem.
Do you still have the goal of opening?
Yeah, first week in November.
First week in November.
Yeah. It's going to be a photo finish.
For carrots.
Heard you have some fresh turkeys being delivered.
Yeah, we do, about 1,200 of them.
Ooh, cool. I know where I'll be getting mine.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no further questions, this will be on our agenda for Monday evening.
Thanks for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you. I learned a lot about spray paint tonight.
Don't even think.
1801 35th Street, zoning code variance request, board to consider an ordinance approving zoning code variance to permit more than three antennas on a structure.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. My name is Brian Schroda. I'm here, obviously, on behalf of the owner here of our property and Sprint and Samsung, seeking a variance for operation of nine antennas on the existing rooftop. Obviously, the rooftop here is 1801 35th Street, it's the senior, the Maze Lake, Maze Lakes Senior Living Center, zoned R6, and there is currently Sprint antennas on this rooftop. Seeking, obviously, variance from Section 4.05 on the restriction of three antennas per single structure. I have an overview of the location of the building, if you can see it. It's centrally located in this parcel, you have residential to the west, it's buffered by a parking lot... It's centrally located in this parcel, uh, you have residential, uh, to the west, it's buffered by a parking lot. Uh, there's Oak Brook to the north, that's, uh, buffered by a tree line and, uh, 35th Street, uh, to the east. Uh, there's the continuation of the Maze Lakes parcel with, uh, a living compound, and there's offices to the further east of that, and offices use, and, uh, Maze Lake Living Center to the south. Here's an overview of the existing site, there is currently three, uh, sectors, uh, if you see the two, uh, facing northwest and northeast, uh, near the middle of the diagram, and one off to the south that's facing southeast. Uh, these are sled mounts, and there's, currently existing nine antennas, uh, three on each of these sled mounts. And in the middle of the rooftop, near the bottom of the, um, the diagram, is where we have our ground equipment, cabinets. Essentially, what we're looking here to do is swap out two of the existing antennas, uh, for new technology. We'll replace those two, we'll not going to, we're not going to increase the overall number from nine, um, in order to add 4G technology and, and, um, make the existing two and 3G technologies more efficient in this area. Each sector will be mere, sector, sled mount will, mirrors this, um, modification. And here's just an overview of the cabinets, uh, we're, there's existing four behind a, uh, screen on the rooftop, and we're looking just to swap out two, uh, behind the screen, not use any additional space, and they won't be visible. There'll be four for final configuration. We're not going to increase the height above the penthouse, it's going to be flush or below, uh, on the existing sled mounts. And we have here a, um, diagram of the, uh, coverage that these antennas will provide. Uh, if you note the, uh, black dots, uh, near the top that are centered, uh, red, uh, borders these black dots, these are the, um, it's the existing network, telecommunication network, uh, in this area. And as you see in the middle of the screen on this diagram, there's a blue dot, uh, that is the rooftop site. Uh, blue and green denote poor to no coverage, so you're going to get low data transfers, drop calls, things of that nature. Uh, this specific diagram is for 4G, uh, that's the 1,600 megahertz. Um, so with, without a variance, uh, that provides for all nine antennas, you're going to have a gap in coverage in this area within this network, um, for two of the other technologies. Each antenna has a different frequency and a different technology that's used. Now, this is a coverage map of the other two frequencies and technologies of the other antennas. Same thing here, we have the same network, and we have a gap in coverage, and this will provide, um, a, uh, the coverage required in this area. I have, uh, photos from the parking lot to the west, as you see, uh, from our previous view, the sled mounts are set back, decreases visual impact, plus you're buffered, uh, by the, a large parking lot. This is from the south, same thing, sled mounts are set back, and that's from the north, facing south. Uh, we had findings of fact here, and essentially, to the first point, um, this is unique, this, this area is unique, um, in that it's, has a gap of coverage in the existing network of, of, um, the telecommunication, uh, coverage. And, uh, this rooftop's otherwise not being used, uh, for any other purpose. There's nine existing, we're going to have nine existing antennas in the end, uh, no change to the number of cabinets. Uh, we're going to provide, uh, 4G coverage to the area as well. Any questions?
I understand about the antennas, but, uh, how much bigger are the, uh, equipment cabinets going to be? Even though they're behind the screen?
The equipment cabinets are going to be smaller, actually.
Good.
They're about half the width of the existing. Um, and they're three by three by five, uh, so I think they're a foot less than the existing RF cabinets and power cabinets that are up there. It won't extend above the screen, it stays below the screen.
Okay, good.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The honor agenda for Monday. Next item, 6424 South Cass, special permit use request. Special use permit request, board to consider ordinance approving a special use permit to operate a Montessori school in the B2 General Business District.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Nigar Haider, and I'm the director of Sunshine Montessori School. I'm here to get, uh, permission of a special use permit for my Montessori school. Any question?
What, uh, what building is that, 64, 64th and Cass?
6424 South Cass, it's the Harbor Mall, uh, building here. It's, uh, it's the back of the Harbor Mall, the unit is the backside of the Harbor Mall.
Okay.
Where's your existing business now?
Uh, it, it was on the Cass and Al Mustafa Foundation. It's the Cass on the, Cass and Oak.
Shannon, have you gone through all of the, uh, the background for the licensing?
The licensing is actually state regulated, and maybe you'd like to speak a little bit about the requirements that you're required to go through and that background check and everything else?
Yeah, it's a, it's a Montessori school, it's not a daycare. So I already talked to the, uh, um, Anne Reford from DCFS people, and they said I don't need any requirement for this, uh, school because it's not that infant and toddler school, and it's not the whole day program. It's under IMS, uh, International Montessori School Registration, so I don't need it. The school runs only nine to noon, it's only for three hour. We don't provide any food and anything like that, so it's just a preparatory school type. It's a small school, we will only have 16 children in the morning, if it, the enrollment will increase, then I might open for afternoon session. But this is only for morning session. I want to keep the school small because I want to give them good quality of education.
And these are children that are three to six?
Yeah.
There is a business license requirement, but short of that, I don't, based on your testimony, believe there's any additional requirement?
The only other, uh, requirement that's in the ordinance is that class size be limited to no more than 16 students. Uh, that's just because of the size of your space and the parking that's available.
There's no limit for that, but I prefer the small, uh, kids' schools, so that's why I'm opening a small school, yeah. But there's not, but this, space is big enough to have more kids there.
I, Shannon, am I correct in that the staff recommendation was?
The recommendation that actually came out of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting was that each session be no larger than 16 students, and I think you had indicated that, uh, it would generally be capped at 15.
Yeah.
But they were giving you the flexibility to have up to one additional student.
And the reason wasn't part parking and traffic concerns and all of that, so that's going to be in the ordinance? And if you ever wanted to exceed a class size of 16, you'd have to come back to the village and get permission for that?
Maybe, maybe the confusion is that total enrollment may be different because you may, if it goes well, you've, you've stated you may offer additional three-hour sessions.
In afternoon, not at the same time, yes.
So 16 in the morning, 16 in the afternoon?
If, if, depends on the enrollment, yes.
Right. Just, um, curious, how many instructors or teachers are in a group of 16?
Two, two full-time teacher, and I have, I want to keep two part-time, yeah.
Oh.
But two full-time, definitely.
Great.
We, we grant, if we grant permission for this, whose responsibility is it to monitor the class size? And then make sure that it's, our ordinance say 15 or 16?
16.
16 per class? Is that the village, or is that the state, or who, who monitors that?
Well, it's not the state, it would be the applicant's responsibility to comply with the ordinance, and if the village learns that the class size has exceeded that, it can act to revoke the special use permit. Uh, potentially, it's a violation of an ordinance, could fine the applicant, or could ask that they come back in for permission because of exceptional circumstances, or changed circumstances. Um, but short of, if the applicant were not to follow, adhere to that limit, the village would actually have to do a site inspection during the day and count students.
Okay. Thank you, any other questions? Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Next item, 110 East Chicago Avenue, special use permit request, board to consider an ordinance approving special use permit to operate an autoglass and upholstery business at the B2 General Business District.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. My name is Danny McBride, and, uh, I started my autoglass business twenty, over 22 years ago in Chicago. And with your permission, I would love to move my business to Westmont, at the, uh, at the 110 East Chicago location. Um, I, my autoglass, um, technicians, I have 10 mobile units that we just, that we dispatch out every morning. Uh, they go out to, to, um, the dealers, body shops, and, and then a lot of insurance companies and, and install glass on site. And also, as far as auto interior, uh, we work on a lot of beautiful antique restorations, muscle cars, restorations, comfortable tops, uh, basic seat repairs, um, and, um, that's about it, any questions?
Questions from board members?
Can I ask you why you're moving from the city, and is your business going to follow you all the way out here, or are you going to?
Oh, yeah, in fact, a lot of the, the accounts, the dealer accounts on Ogden Avenue, um, I service them. As far as, um, an evident Porsche, um, uh, Oak Brook Toyota, Westmont, uh, Ogden Lincoln Mercury Chevy.
So location really isn't that important to you, whether it's in the city or the suburb?
Exactly, yeah, we, we actually give them a cover of about a 40 mile radius, uh, sometimes a little further, we even go as far as Antioch. Um, and, uh, um, and average install takes about an hour, hour and a half. I don't know if you've ever had a windshield installed or glass replaced in your vehicle, but, um, our vehicles are equipped with generators, you know, so, um, we go out there and vacuum out the broken glass and out of your vehicle in, at your location, put the new glass in, we're done.
Do you have a location in Naperville?
I do not, I live in Naperville.
Okay.
So this will be more convenient for you?
Yes, ma'am.
Lot more convenient.
Yes, ma'am.
Are the trucks taken home by the, with the employees, or are they left here?
No, sir, the, the, the employees take all the vehicles home.
Okay.
Yeah. It's easier for me and for them too, because a lot of times what I'll do is, I'll call them, um, 6 o'clock in the morning, and say, hey, Joe, go to the warehouse, pick up this glass, and go do this job on site. So sometimes they, they won't even come in, they'll, they'll go straight to the warehouse and load it up too.
So the shop will be mostly restoration for the interior?
Yeah, and, and I can only handle one, one or two cars at a time, so, um, and, um, and the cars, obviously because they're nice cars, they're never left outside, they have to be inside and, and, um, kept watch on.
Sounds good.
And all of your invoicing will be done out of that location, correct?
Yes, sir.
The sales tax will go through here, then? We won't go through another location, there's not going to be another?
Right through here.
Okay.
That's a, a pretty large building, will, everything, like I said, pretty much be kept inside the building?
Well, as far as, um, you know, I, I might, I might stock a, 100 windshields. You know, it's mainly for warehousing, as, as far as my, my, my glass, and, and it's even impossible to, to stock, uh, stock that many glass because there's so many different vehicles, and so many different glass, uh, size, so I'll just stock maybe 100 glass windshields, and that's about it.
Well, I mean, there's not a whole lot of parking outside of the building, in either the front or the back.
There's a, there's a little, um, I think there's parking in the front for like four cars, um, and as far as the side, there's, um, there's enough parking for a few cars, but I won't keep any cars outside because there's no need. Like I said, uh, about, uh, the majority of my, my business is mobile, I would say about 85, 90% is mobile.
What about the parking in the rear of the building?
There's no parking in the rear, and I, I, I don't need to park vehicles in the rear, yeah.
Does he follow another same thing as the gas stations, that we can't leave cars outside at nighttime? Or they can't?
All vehicles waiting service or pickup have to be stored within the screened area indicated on the site plan. I don't know if you're aware, but staff had, um, I don't know if I'd call them concerns, but certain conditions that they recommended if this were to be approved, about where vehicles can be parked, screening of vehicles, things like that. I don't know if those were shared with you?
You share with me.
I believe so.
Right.
As the village attorney, I've placed those, uh, conditions into the ordinance, and will make sure you get a copy of that so you're aware of them. I don't know if the board had any questions about those special conditions?
Well, I see that, um, uh, Planning and Zoning wanted an additional stipulation to add additional landscaping along the west property line, and that they also, um, recommended to the village board that the eight conditions suggested by staff should be incorporated with the plan. And reading the general overview of what they are, I think they have done a very, very good job of coming up with conditions that, that are going to work and so that everybody, um, can be happy. So I think that, um, they should be spelled out, um, are they spelled out in the ordinance?
Well, as I saw the ordinance, and I apologize for the first time this afternoon, I went through them.
Yeah, that's fine.
The special conditions right now are incorporated by reference, and I made a note to myself to list them out specifically in the ordinance rather than reference them. Then the question is, do you want to also incorporate the landscaping requests from the P&amp;Z Commission?
Yes, I think there should be nine conditions, the aid from P&amp;Z, and then their additional, uh, landscaping along the west property line. And that they should be, they should be listed out so that we're not approving something blind and everybody hopes for the best.
Historically, no, I agree.
Any other questions? This has been an unsightly, um, building in the past, we've had complaints from the other neighbors, the other businesses, as to the physical appearance of the business. So I think it's real important for us to have those controls in place so that when you take over the business, we welcome your business, but we just want you to be a pleasant, beautifying addition to the area.
Oh, yes, sir, in fact, um, I've already had, um, contractors come out to survey the, uh, the building, and, um, there's, um, the, a few things that I have to address. Number one is the, the cracks in the, in the, in the brick walls, the, um, the metal supports and braces, they're, they're, they're not correct, um, I would say size and weight or whatever, to, to, to keep, to hold the weight of the building, so that's going to be taken care of. Um, the, um, the, the flashings in the, in the roof area, uh, the tug pointing, the, there's, I'm going to redo the windows on the side there. They're just plain windows, I want to, I want to use insulated windows, obviously, for, for, um, to, to save energy as well as looks. So we're going to take care of that, and, um, I think the board, uh, last time I was here, they wanted to, me to remove the, the trees in the front, but I think they look nice, um, but if you want me to remove it, I'll do that as well.
I don't think we want any trees being ripped out.
No.
Yeah, because they, they look really nice.
Was that a recommendation of?
I think it was that you would add additional landscaping materials.
Oh, okay.
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 You're, you're obviously purchasing the building.
Yes, sir.
You're going to put that much money into it.
Yes, sir, and, um, and the, um, the, uh, the, the thing is, my closing is October 14th, and, um, so if I don't close at that date, then I, I'll probably lose the building. So I'm hoping that you, Mr. Mayor, and the, and the board will allow me to, um, to operate in that, um, in this building while I make the, uh, the improvements.
Well, if you've been in that business for 20 years, you obviously know what you're doing.
Yeah, yeah.
And do it well.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So I think he raises an interesting question, uh, he can't, the, there's some improvements that have to be done that are in those special conditions that maybe he can't do overnight.
that maybe he can't do overnight. You want to put a time limit by which he has to complete those, but allow him to operate in the interim.
Yes. Yeah, I think that's fair. I think that's very reasonable.
As far as planting, you know, we're at the.
Can't really plant now.
Well, actually, it's a good planting time now. But the time will pass.
Quickly. If he doesn't close until the fourteenth.
Right.
So do you want to do sometime in, you know, late spring? May, May first?
Yeah, even June first.
June first.
Give them extra planting time.
Okay, any more questions?
No.
She'd be a welcome addition to the village.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, 405 South Oak. Amendment to zoning code variance approval. Board to consider ordinance amending a previously approved ordinance which granted a zoning code variance request to allow lot coverage greater than thirty-five percent for the purpose of constructing a deck.
I expected our petitioner this evening. However, I don't see him in the audience. I don't know if you want to revisit this at the very end of the agenda? Should he have been delayed or make some other motion?
Well, we can always pass it because if, usually, we would have gotten to it by now, I think, if he was coming. It's pretty late. So we can always just pass it. Can't, not pass it, continue it, table it.
Postpone it.
Postpone it. That's the word.
Push it.
Push it over.
Sounds good to me.
To the next meeting or to the end of our agenda?
Next meeting. I don't think he'll be here.
Next meeting.
So we'll put it on Monday's agenda to postpone it to the next set of meetings?
That's good.
Sure.
Well, we can talk about it Monday, though, because we all know what it is. Might as well just.
Just place it on the agenda for Monday.
Yeah, okay.
And then we'll reach out and find out if he can be here Monday.
And then you can make a motion.
And then we can always postpone it.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Andy Frain Services. Board to consider ordinance approving agreement with Andy Frain Services.
John, does it?
It's the crossing guard staff.
On Monday.
Okay. At the September sixth Admin and Finance meeting, we had asked to discuss this because of the turnover issue and the lack of response that we were receiving to our recruitment efforts. And based on that discussion, the board had asked us to get a revised proposal. And I believe that that has been distributed. Are there any questions? Oh, there was one question that came up that evening, and that was the rate. The rate is twelve fifty for the crossing guards, and that is the same rate that they are currently making. So they would still be making the same rate.
But they will get fewer hours, correct?
That is correct.
So it's ultimately a cut in salary for them?
That is true. However, they would be, they would have the opportunity to.
Fill in.
Other anti-frain opportunities, yes. So, but that is the difference. Are there any questions?
No.
John, did you want to?
Well, just that the agreement came in, I believe it was today.
This morning.
So I've got a number of, at this point, handwritten changes throughout the agreement and needs cleaned up. Nothing that is earth-shocking or that I don't think we can overcome. However, we need to get it done by Monday. So I'll convey red-line changes to you tomorrow morning, Kathy.
Sure.
And we'll try and get it negotiated. I don't see where they should have a problem with any of the changes.
Okay.
They describe the services in a somewhat goofy manner because this is their standard form contract for all security event services, whatever. If it's not in final form on Monday, but we're kind of close to most issues, you have the option as a board of approving it subject to final attorney modifications, or you can just postpone it. I don't know what the urgency is to get this in place.
We were able to, as I mentioned in the board action request sheet, we were able to fill one of the vacancies. We still do have one vacancy to fill. So the sooner we can make a decision, I would say, the better. But of course, you know.
If, if this were delayed for another set of meetings, would that be a hardship for the police department?
As Kathy mentioned, the one opening, we're doing a background check on the one. So it's very, and it's a, the opening is for a substitute that we're filling, not on our crossings. What that would be is if a crossing guard were to call in sick, we don't have a substitute fill on. Then we have a community service officer, Roseanne Terry, fills it up. And if she's unable to, we'd have a police officer do it just briefly. But it was a, it was the substitute position we're trying to fill. All our permanent positions, from my understanding, is that they're covered.
That's correct. The permanent positions, because the substitutes filled the permanent positions.
I, I would like to, you know, maybe talk to Bolingbrook or talk to some of these communities and see how long they've been using them. And, you know, was it smooth from the get-go? I'd kind of like to understand what we're getting into from a user standpoint.
Did provide those emails? I don't know.
Yeah, I did see the emails, but.
And I think that Depper spoke to.
Bolingbrook gave a very high recommendation of the service.
But how long have they been doing it?
That I don't know. But they spoke very highly of it, highly recommended it. This is something that we've been looking at for a while and did not want to be the beta site for this. However, more and more towns, I know Oak Park does it, and I've heard good things from the public on Oak Park. One example was, someone said they were in Oak Park and saw that they were uniformed nice and had coats and like black pants and looked really, really sharp. And when I went to go contact Oak Park to see what they're doing, found out they're anti-frain.
Good.
So, I mean, appearance-wise, it may improve things a little bit.
They do background checks and motor vehicle background checks on all of their employees.
Good.
Correct, which would be a savings to us because we currently do our own right now.
Yeah.
Are they also, they're also state licensed, correct?
Andy Frain?
They may be for security reasons.
The security side of their division.
But this is crossing guards, so I don't know if that would apply.
I mean, I, I don't know why, I don't know why we'd really want to delay this. I mean, I think it's something that we've talked about. And it looks like it's working well. This is a company that's been in existence a long time. And they're across the entire United States. So, I mean, I'm not sure that.
I think it's eighty-six years.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure how much more.
Yeah. Although they're new to this, but.
Do they do the appropriate background check because they're working with little children?
I would believe so.
Yeah, I'd be interested to know what, how extensive the background check is because there's so many different levels of background checks.
They say they do it pursuant to their standard operating procedures and background checks. So I imagine, Kathy, if you send an email to them saying, give us your standard operating procedures.
I have it.
Oh, good.
We need to, I think we need to be able to tell parents that they are specifically looking at any criminal history.
I actually have it right here. They do multi-state name and address background check, federal name and address background check, state of Illinois sex offender check, state of Illinois violent crime and child murderer list check, U.S. Department of Justice nationwide sex offender check, live scan fingerprint background check, national social security search.
You can't get more thorough than what they're doing.
And OFAC watch list search.
And basically, our background checks for this, it's not as thorough as what for police officers. But the back, the fingerprint is mandatory. And then most of our checks are senior citizens and everything. So we do our, you know, our detectives do a name check and do everything pretty much similar here. The big, to me, the biggest concern was the fingerprint check. If the fingerprint check's not there, I'd say they have a concern.
Yeah, I think my greatest concern is that it is a cut in salary for our current, our current guards. I mean, they could work more hours, but.
Right, right.
Maybe, you know, if the need is there, they could.
The cut is, is that, you know, there was a minimum guarantee that our staff got, or that our crossing guards got paid for. They will get paid for time worked. That's the difference, so.
I think we have to do this.
Right now, they're going to get like a flat rate fee, I believe, or like two hours for a crossing when the crossing may be twenty minutes or an hour. Is Kathy saying, no, that will be for time where actually worked?
Plus, they'd have the availability to go into the, into the actual overall pool. And if there's other opportunities and other events.
Correct.
They could be asked to work. So it could be a case they could make extra money.
They could. If they would let them cross over into, you know, Wrigley Field or wherever they go, concerts, whatever.
We've been told that they'll be offered other anti-frain work. What did they do? Would that be crossing duties in another town? One of our concerns was is that if our crossing guard calls in sick, anti-frain has to replace the person.
That's the best part.
They'd better have substitutes. It looked that way. So maybe they pull someone from another town to come over here and offer them that way. Some of our crossing guards may or may not drive. I mean, I know some of them do. So, I mean, they could accept the additional employment if they so chose.
Yeah. So maybe approve it pending.
I think it's a win-win.
Yeah. Agreed.
Okay, no further questions. Thank you. Next item, loitering ordinance. Board to consider ordinance rescinding the current loitering ordinance.
Straightforward, as explained at the last meeting, the ordinance as written is unconstitutional. The board did not have an interest in trying to modify it. It wasn't worth the time and expense for the results. So this just eliminates that from the books. It was not being enforced anyhow.
The last couple of days, it reminds me of something, though. I know you said we didn't want to revisit it. So Chief, what do we use for, there's a couple of homeless guys, and I understand their plight, but they're back sleeping at the train station. And last I checked, there weren't public toilets in there, but it sure smells like somebody's using one.
In the north side depot?
Yep.
South side depot is closed up. And we moved them along.
Just the rest, right by the crosswalk.
Yeah, we check on them, do a check on the well-being check, making sure they're okay, making sure they're, and offer them any type of assistance and trying to encourage them to move along. As far as, it's kind of hard since it's private, public property. You know, another option could be using them to move along or, you know, criminal trespass, which is also kind of hard to do. The loitering, we cannot do. We just try to discourage them from being in there. And of course, we have the public urination. Or if they're drinking alcohol in public, there's also the option for an arrest charge. When the officers get there, they look to see, here's the open can of beer. Well, you open and try to handle it that way.
Is there a time limit after? You know, the trains stop at a certain point. They're in the train depot, you said?
Yes.
I mean, you know, parks routinely say parks closed after X number of hours. You're on the park property after the posted time you're trespassing. I imagine we can post hours in the train depot when the last train is expected, the twelve forty leaves the city or whatever it is.
Yeah, last, at one thirty.
You can work on that.
Yeah.
At least then there's notice to them.
Yeah, because.
Then we can say you have to leave.
This week, there's not even any benches left. They're all sleeping in there, so.
Okay. We'll work on either posted signage and making sure we can, you know, with the public property, making sure we can do that and then enforce it accordingly.
Especially because they have the motion sensor lights. And when it's dark and you get off the train and you step into the shelter and the lights go on and there's all these people in there, you, yeah.
It will be investigated.
Thanks.
Full taste.
Next item, flexible spending account agreement. Board to consider an ordinance approving a flexible spending account agreement with Discovery Benefits Incorporated.
Okay. During the budget time, we had talked about switching our flexible spending provider. And we decided upon Discovery Benefits, Inc. And with this new provider, we will have a savings in our fees, which is always a good thing. And we had gotten a lot of good feedback from the other members of the IPBC that they've been happy with this provider's service. So we decided to give this provider an opportunity to provide us with the flexible spending service. Our village attorney has looked over the agreement and made some changes. And I emailed that agreement to, back to Discovery today and also sent you all a copy of that via email so that you could see what the changes were. Nothing very significant. And we don't anticipate any issues with Discovery over changes. Are there any questions?
Questions?
Nope.
I can see my biggest question, and I talked to Kathy about this, is, you know, this is an ever-changing area of the law with the Obama health care plan and what's going to happen. Something we need to stay on top of. And you rely on this provider to hopefully educate you on the law, tell you what changes are necessary to the plan. And in Exhibit A, there is language that says they'll consult with us about changes to the law. How effectively they do that, we kind of have to trust that they're going to stay on top of it and advise us. If not, we do have the right to get out of this agreement because they're not doing their job.
And one of the other benefits that we have to being in the IPBC pool is that our administrator, Gallagher, is good at keeping abreast of all of the changes as well that are happening. So they're usually good about notifying us as well. So between them and hopefully Discovery letting us know of the changes, we should know them in a timely manner.
Thank you, Kathy. I will delay reading the next item, which is the National Community Planning Month proclamation, which is a proclamation declaring October as Community Planning Month in the Village of Westmont.